Good morning. Good morning and thank you for joining us. Joaquin Aldean sitting in for Teri Lucas for liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on the website at calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to me, the board liaison for the day. And for attendees participating remotely, please use the Q and A feature on Zoom to make a public comment. You may address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Great, thank you so much for that. Field of guard Aguanado. Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein. Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a quorum, President Costa. Great, thank you so much. With that, colleagues, I'm going to lead us in our pledge. Can you please stand? There's no flag, but we're going to pretend the flag is in our heart.
No, we have a flag.
Okay, hold on, please hold.
We'll just say we don't have a flag.
Okay, we're going to just have the flag in our hearts, y'all. On the count of three, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And next up, we have item 1.4, which is my report. As you know, I like to keep it brief, but I do just want to note that I found it interesting that EDD just came out with their unemployment numbers for February of 2024 for the state of California. And we are seeing an increase in unemployment in the state. They've cited 5.2% unemployment rate. And so yet again, I just think in ways we possibly could not imagine of at the beginning of Calbright, there are forces happening in the economy that make our mission even more critical than before. As more Californians find themselves unemployed, Calbright offers a reel and a self-paced and a very low-cost way for people to retrain themselves in different industry sectors and to hopefully continue creating economic mobility for them and their families. So anyway, you know, the economy has a lot of sort of mixed signals right now, but nonetheless, I think the core mission of Calbright remains and its importance grows exponentially every day. With that, I will turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you so much, President Costa, Vice President Aguanado, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. A few members of the Calbright team and I just got back from the ASU GSB Summit in San Diego, which is fittingly themed, "Here Comes the Sun." This convening brought together higher ed experts, institutions, businesses, and technologists that are seeking to solve for some of the most vexing challenges that are facing the communities, especially the communities of learners that we serve in achieving educational access that leads to greater economic mobility. This year, Calbright was invited to share our insights and our learnings on how best to serve adult learners, to discuss our approach as we sit at the intersection of educational transformation, equity, and AI, and to highlight our efforts alongside leaders in other states to create scalable models for the nation that are expressly focused on the more than 40 million Americans lacking access to educational opportunities and good jobs. It's a true testament to Calbright's progress to be able to meaningfully contribute to the state and national conversations on driving adult learner success in order to build a stronger workforce. At a moment when, as board chair Costa highlighted, at a moment when California's unemployment rate is actually the highest in the nation, the critical need for growth and expansion of Calbright's efforts responds to that renewed urgency that we're feeling in finding new and better ways to connect to support Californians that are seeking greater economic security for themselves and for their families. In addition to the more than 4,000 learners that we directly serve today, our way of working is actually generative, contributing insights and actionable strategies for statewide and national efforts to better support adult learners and prepare them for the workforce today and what's around the corner for the workforce tomorrow. So that could be upskilling, that could be reskilling, that could be shifting careers. To Calbright learners, 70% of which are BIPOC, 90% over the age of 25, a third of which are parents or caregivers. And adult learners more broadly, we know that they're rarely the beneficiaries of very focused data-driven innovations that support their specific needs and are conditioning their specific success. That is why we know that they require an educational model that can mold to their goals and not the other way around. Every day at Calbright for us is thinking about who we are serving and engaging in innovative educational design and implementation that's increasingly responsive and supportive to their needs and driving them towards helping to navigate what is clearly and apparently becoming increasingly complex labor market. Next week, I will testify before the Budget Subcommittee on Education Finance to discuss how Calbright is an essential piece of the puzzle for driving adult learner success and in turn boosting economic mobility and equity across California. We are now more than halfway through our seven-year startup period, and since the beginning at Calbright, we have been judicious and fiscally responsible with our finances to ensure we could adequately provide for current students and preserve the resources necessary to prepare for the scaling of our operations to ensure we can serve more students without compromising the quality of our learning and support model that conditions our student progress and success. Now, with tremendous progress and growth, Calbright is spending one-time funds in an accelerated manner to support the college and to support the board's adopted vision, the strategic vision that is guiding the final phase of the college's development over its multi-year startup period, concluding establishing a sustainable funding model and expanding and accelerating the pace of our impact. And as research and development catalyst for the CCC system, that's expressly focused on adult learner success, we're also continuing to invest in the development scaling of efforts that help us all meet the needs of this community of learners. So to that end, a little preview and maybe a little suspense. Next month, Calbright will release a statewide impact report with our labor market analysis partner, Lightcast. And without giving too much away, I can say that the report really illustrates the critical role that California's public sector plays in advancement, skills-based hiring opportunities in critical areas of need at the state level, at the local level, and within our regional economies. In related news, Calbright is also a newly appointed California Division of Apprenticeship Standards pre-apprenticeship provider and are moving forward with efforts to support the public sector apprenticeship space, furthering really shared efforts to expand educational opportunities and workforce opportunities for a diverse community of adult learners. So with every innovation, every new program, partnership at Calbright, we're continuing to build with our students front and center, those who are in the virtual walls of our institution and those who have yet to find us. And as I mentioned recently on Eli Oakley's podcast, if you want to make education work for a diverse population in a time of technological transformation and actually social change, you have to create the space with accountability, with safeguards for innovation to actually happen, to test what works, and that is what we are continuing to champion at Calbright. So with that, I want to thank you, President Costa. This concludes my remarks.
Great, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to that labor market analysis. Well timed. Colleagues, I do want to just go back because I forgot to ask y'all if there was any discussion on the order of the agenda. We don't have that much on our agenda, but I do need to ask you, is there any discussion on the order of the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We do not have a closed session today, therefore we're going to move directly into section three of our agenda. First up, we have the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment.
I see no public comment, colleagues. I will entertain a motion in a second.
Haynes approves. Moves to approve.
I can buy Rawlings.
Okay, we have Haynes and Rawlings. With that, can you please call the roll?
Field of guard Aguanado.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein. Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Great, thank you. But that, that motion carries. Next up, I've been saying Pam is the star of the show today. It's true.
Am I up already?
She's always the star of the show, she did. Let's be clear. But we are in section four of our agenda, the action items, and we have item 4.1, which is the California Community College Trustee Board Election. Just as way of background, as you will recall, at our last full board meeting, the board delegated the authority of our votes for these openings to executive committee. As has been our practice, board member Haynes, who has been a longtime participant of the League, does the research for us and then presents on her recommendation for our voting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague trustee.
Thank you. So I think it's always important to give some outline of why we do this across our entire system. So the Triple CT, and this is for the trustee board, there are two boards under the League. One of them is for CEOs and superintendent presidents, and then the other one is a trustee board. It is an elected board by its colleagues across the state. A reminder, 73 districts, 116 colleges, all of the boards are elected by the residents in their serving area. So the board itself, the trustee board, I will call it the Triple CT, is comprised of 21 members. The board members are elected for a three-year term. They can stand for reelection after they are elected for two additional three-year terms for a total of nine years. There are 13 candidates, seven of which are currently board of the Triple CT board members. This happens every year, they're 21 members, and so it is a staggered election. So there are seven candidates who are actually up for reelection that are currently Triple CT board members. And they will have just come, some will have completed a three-year term. We have one that's completed a two, a two-three-year terms and is up for the third three-year term. And so many of these names, you will have, you will, maybe you won't remember, I remember, have approvals have been made on them. So I'm going to, I'm going to name everyone who is running, there's a total of 13 candidates, a reminder, seven of which are currently on the board and are running for reelection. The first person is Barbara Gaines. She is a trustee at Antelope Community College. Antelope is in the Los Angeles County and it is a single college district. Nan Gomez-Hightsburg is, and you'll might remember her name, she's been elected, been appointed by governor. I never, thank you. Again, I was getting ready to call him Gavin. That was in a first name basis. And so, so she is, she's just a new Board of Governors member, but she is a trustee at Kern Community College District. This is a three-college district, so it's a multi-college district, and it's in the Central Valley. Gregory Hannah is a trustee at Siskiyou Joint Community College District, also a single college district. Hortensia Armandares is from Imperial Community College District, a single community college district in the Inland Empire. Barbara Calhoun, Compton Community College District, also a single college district within LA County. Dorothy Battenfeld, Sonoma County, Junior College District, also a single college. Julie Shore, Grosmont Cuyamaca, which is a multi-college district in the East San Diego County area. Yvette Davis, Glendale Community College District, and she, and that is a single college district also within LA County. Greg Pensa, Allen Hancock Community College District, that's sort of the San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Ventura area. Bernardo Perez, Ventura County Community College District, that's a multi-college district in Ventura. Deborah Ikeda, State Center Community College District, which is a multi-college district, that's Fresno, King, Madera, and Tulare. And then Milton Richards, who is out of Yosemite, which is also a multi-college district, Tuolumne and Stanislaus. And then finally, Raymond Macarena from Sequoia Community College District, which is a single college district, Tulare, King, Fresno County are the areas. I say that, and the reason why I'm sharing that is I like to be transparent, I like to be intentional, and so we pride ourselves on really trying to maximize leadership on some of our boards, and that, we don't always do it, recognizing that almost close to 70% of the students within California are students of color. And as we raise equity as one of our highest ideals and values, we need to make certain that those voices are reflected on the boards that serve our students. And so I attempt to try to do that in the selection, and I will be, I'll be glad to share that. Now, of those, of the names that I've just mentioned, I will repeat who are the, who are currently on the board of, the, I'm sorry, Triple CT board currently and are up for reelection for the second term or third term, as the case may be. Nan Gomez-Hightsburg, Hortensia Armandares, Barbara Calhoun, Yvette Davis, Greg Pensa, Bernardo Perez, and Deborah Ikeda. Some of the criteria that I look for are the opportunities that folks who are planning to run for this board, to what extent have they been engaged at the League, either in there are all kinds of committees that they can volunteer for? What kind of leadership roles have they taken in their community that they're willing to share? You know, why, sort of, why are they doing it? And then sometimes length of service may play a role. And then I also look at what the current makeup of the board is relative to our boards, our members of color and our allies, who are really out there working on behalf of our students in partnership with the goals of making certain that equity stands at the top of our values. And for that reason, I am not, I am recommending that we bring back the seven. One, so I'll speak to Nan Gomez-Hightsburg. She's been on the, been a trustee for five years, which may not sound like it's a lot of time, but she comes out of, she comes out of Bakersfield, she comes out of working in Kern. When you look at what Nan has done, she was forefront in volunteering as soon as she became a trustee, and she was one of the founding members of the Women's Caucus. And if you were to look at all of her accomplishments, she has made students the forefront of her work. And I consider, this is personal, I just consider Nan someone who is going to go into battle when it comes up, when it comes to making certain that our students are served. The second person is Hortensia Armandares from Imperial Community College in the Inland Empire. Both the Central Valley and, and as important, the Inland Empire are places where there are significant numbers of residents of color, large Latino populations. Latinos serve as the largest population, single population of folks of color in California. For them not to be at the table based on low income, how their systems work would, for me, to be a travesty. And so Hortensia actually has only served, I think, one year. She failed, the person who she failed was also from the Inland Valley, and he left before his three-year term was up. So she's only served one, only served for one year. I think we should, we should bring her back because we need her voice relative to the issues and the policies that impact our students. Barbara Calhoun, this will be her second, from Compton, will be her second, if she wins reelection, this will be her second two, three-year term. Barbara is someone who also has served about five and a half years, but when you look at Barbara's resume, she has, she has been strong relative to the political realities, but she's been somebody in Compton where she served as a city council member. She has been an innovator. I think she has, every year she has put together a veterans event, and then she is very strong on the services that our students need. And so, and she's taken a leadership role once she's been on the Triple CT, serving as the chair of the African-American Caucus. Yvette Davis is from Glendale. I see, now, Yvette tends to be a little bit quieter, but she also serves on a number of committees, and there's not a conference that I'm at that Yvette's not there and being engaged in the work that's being done. Greg Pensa, this will be his third, if elected, if approved, his third of three terms. He's also what I would call an ally relative to the work that we're doing and the policies that we're trying to change within, within the community college system. And then Bernardo Perez, I've known Bernardo for a very long time. He is embedded within, within the Ventura area, and that area is broken up into a number of cities. And if memory serves me, he has been mayor for a number of years. He, matter of fact, I saw him most recently. He's very, very engaged on issues having to do with the Baccalaureate degree. Pulls my ear every once in a while, but he cares, and so, and he's taken a leadership role as well. And then the final, the seventh person that I would recommend is Deborah Ikeda from State Center. Deborah was an administrator for 20 years before she retired and then ran, so I think she has been on the board for eight years as a trustee. To, and if you were to look at the page of the work that she's done over the years, it's, it boggles the, I don't know how much, I can't believe how much energy she must have, but coming on to the Triple CT board, she also chairs the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus and is extremely active. She was recognized by the ACCT, which is the National Association of Community College Trustees, last year as the trustee of the year award. And she's just a hard worker and cares about students. So those are the seven that I would, I would approve. I want to add a little bit more. This is a 21-member board. I just want to add a couple of things before I, and if you have any questions, please feel free to make them. Six of, based on these recommendations, six of the multi, six are multi-college. Okay, let me back up. There are, I think there are three here that are multi-college districts. There would be a total of six multi-college districts. What that would represent are 24 colleges. There are 15 single college districts. The balance is important, the voices of single college districts, the voices of rural areas. So I've tried to make certain that someplace like Redwoods would be represented. Now, obviously, there's a Siskiyou, there are also other remote areas, but the person who is, who is in Redwood, who is the representative, Danny Kelly, he's active, he's engaged, he understands the issues with very remote, very rural kinds of areas, and he brings that forth when we're sort of talking about the 50% rule, when we're talking about all kinds of other things that impact small rural areas in a very different way than impacts those who are in urban areas. We need all of those voices at the table. The gender makeup would then be, to be really honest, 15 females to six males. And what I, what I would say, and I said it at my Los Rios board meeting, and not in jest, but understandably, when you want something to get done, you choose a woman. Take it or leave it, but anyway. So that is my recommendation. When I look at, when I look at the configuration, if these were selected, these seven, in addition to who is not currently serving on the board, eight members would be Latino, two would be Asian Pacific Islander, two would be African American, it would be Caucasian, and then we have one Middle Eastern, but he's not, he's an American, he's a US citizen, but, and he's in Santa Barbara. But that would be sort of the, that would be the makeup. And where I say we would be is if we say that 69% of our student body is at, are students of color, and we would, we would be at the 67, 70% area relative to the complexion of our board. That's not a bad thing because we get all perspectives and hopefully get, and broad perspectives when we have to make hard decisions around policy. And that would, in my report, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Colleagues, is there any discussion or questions for our colleague about the presentation on this item? Bill shaking his head, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
No public comment, colleagues. I do just want to thank Pam again for her diligence. She's done this for several years in a row, so thank you so much.
I'm trying to train somebody.
Yeah, exactly. I really appreciate it because she really does an in-depth analysis and we provide it with a lot of thought, which I really appreciate. With that, colleagues, I would be happy to accept a motion and a second for the seven candidates as specified by trustee Haynes.
Promote. Although. Rawlings out.
I'll second.
All right, so we've got Aguanado with the motion, Rawlings with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Field of guard Aguanado.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein. Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Great, that motion carries. Next up, we're in section five of our agenda, our information and reports, and I will invite Ange, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Paulantino, I should be more formal, sorry about that, to report on our contracts and purchases.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguanado, and members of the Board of Trustees. We're filing contracts executed in March 2024 and payments and purchases totaling $1,077,627. Were there any questions?
Colleagues, any questions? Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, with that, we will move on to section six with our constituency group of sports. We have one of our constituent groups for the report today, our Academic Senate, and with that, I will invite Mr. Stewart to provide his report.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguanado, and esteemed members of the Board of Trustees. As always, this presentation is free of acronyms. My name, my name is Michael Stewart and I'm the president of the Academic Senate for Calbright. I'm honored to speak with you today about Calbright College's ongoing efforts to increase our influence and impact in the constantly evolving world of technology. Despite the dynamic and ever-changing education and workforce training landscape, we remain committed to driving strategic initiatives that position us as leaders in responsive, skills-based learning. The participation of our dedicated faculty, whose expertise and commitment have been instrumental in making these strategic initiatives a reality, is equally crucial in this endeavor. In addition to these factors... In addition to these faculty-driven course updates, I'm pleased to share with you that we made significant strides in expanding our technology-focused programs offering here at Calbright. Our faculty has been working hard to update the course outlines of records for Calbright's Information Technology Support Program. Our cybersecurity program, and our medical coding program. These updates have been approved by the curriculum committee and are designed to help students develop industry-specific skills that will be useful in their careers. These revised outlines will include more project-based assessments, providing the students with practical hands-on experience and applying their knowledge. These curriculum updates ensure that Calbright's programs closely align with the required skills and competencies in high-growth industries. And meet the demands of employers. So for our program updates, Calbright has officially launched its program, or its project management program. With over forty-five students enrolled, the program covers various topics such as meeting management. Organizational culture and project documentation. To provide learners with real-world experience, Calbright has partnered with Rypen. And the program aims to connect learners with companies that require skilled project managers to improve their workflows. We have also officially launched our network technology course. And students are successfully matriculating while gaining valuable networking skills across multiple platforms. This program helps them to design and implement networks, preparing them for networking roles in the industry. And based on student feedback, the program effectively equips them with the central networking expertise required to transition into IT jobs. And two of our core programs that have been for, been here for a while, which is our Essential Twenty-Four Skills course. We've increased the coordination of outreach efforts to students, building on previous efforts to develop a balanced and practical approach for students at various progress points in the course. And as for our medical coding, medical coding course, there's been an increase in student engagement and progress in the pathways. And two students are getting ready to sit for their certified professional coder exam. I know we always talk about the instructional side of the faculty. But in conclusion, I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to our counseling faculty. Their proficiency and individualized support enable our students to overcome academic obstacles. Develop crucial skills and achieve their educational aspirations. And also, we are delighted to announce that we have initiated a collaboration with Joe, the Vice President of Human Resources Department, to promote diversity and inclusivity, which will further enhance our unique culture. We will keep you informed of our advancements as we continue to set higher standards for the education community involvement in our institution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your report. With that, we are now in section seven of the agenda, the public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? There are none. All right, I see no public comments. All right, colleagues. The hour of eleven thirty-six upon us, the business of the Board of Trustees Executive Committee is now complete and waiting adjourned. Thank you for your participation. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Hildy.